Good evening. Of all as well?
Evening.
Let me go ahead on and call the Council zoning public hearing May twenty fifth meeting to order. And I'll ask Ms. Mathis to please call the role for council members attendance.
Certainly, Malinowski.
Here.
Hugh.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Tracyo. Tracyo. Joe Walker. Joe Walker. Baron.
Here.
Over to Walker.
Present.
Mackey.
Here.
English. English. Newton.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. That brings us to our next item with addition and deletions to the agenda. Any changes, deletions first of staff?
No, sir, we do not, we do not have any deletions or additions to take up at this time. We do have a, we do have a few requests for deferrals and withdrawals. But I believe those will be taking up each individual case.
That will work, yes. Thank you. That brings to our next item on the dinner is adoption of the agenda. Chair, ten most adoption of the agenda.
Go move, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved. It's a second, moving properly second. Staff doesn't have any changes. I'll ask Ms. Mathis to cover all for the motion to adopt the agenda.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Hugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tracyo.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
Over to Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English. English.
Yes.
Thank you. Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next items on our agenda is the item five, open public hearings and map amendments that would require action. So the first item is five A map amendment one, which is case number twenty one dash zero zero two MA. John Swistak from PDD to RM dash HD. That's SE Rice Meadow Way. Tax map number R two zero three one zero dash zero seven dash zero two and zero three. That public hearing for that item is now opened. If anyone sign up to speak for the public here for item five A one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have a letter in support. And then we also have a letter against the request as well. And then, of course, in your packets, there was a petition that was added in as well.
Thank you. Can, for the record, can you share those letters up to two minutes each?
Yes, sir. So the first letter is from Mr. Kim Pocock. And it is, it says, John Swistak purchased the subject property in two thousand and five and undertook multiple efforts to improve the character of the property along with the neighborhood. The undertaking included commercial retail and office developments built to suite offerings with owner financing. During the past fifteen years, all these offerings produced the same response, no interest due to limited commercial exposure. Mr. Swistak contacted MAP Land and Homes to explore opportunities to cultivate the highest and best use for the property. The residential shortage poses an excellent opportunity to provide single family luxury townhomes at this location, providing nearby access to necessary consumables. Mr. Swistak, in conjunction with MAP, engaged the Hussey Gaybell Engineering Firm to explore the options of applying the highest and best use for the property location. Residential is the best option, and the Richland County Planning Commission unanimously agreed. MAP representatives and Mr. Swistak, in conjunction with Councilmember Overture Walker and Division Manager slash zoning administrator Giannard Price, participated in the April first, two thousand and twenty one virtual town hall meeting. Mr. Swistak verbally presented the history and timeline, beginning with his property purchase, multiple scenarios to attract commercial businesses to the property to present residential consideration. Following brief presentations by MAP representatives, the meeting opened to the public. Questions and comments with answers and/or responses by the panel. The town hall meeting concluded after the last question and comment. Councilman Overture Walker stated in recent correspondence regarding the rezoning, "I've spoken with Bishop McGwin and his legal counsel about the project in addition to hosting a town hall. So I don't have any additional questions regarding the rezoning request. Further thought, or I thought Mr. McGwin and his team did a fine job addressing the questions and concerns posed by my constituents." Based on this information, we believe Mr. Swistak and his team had met the requirements, responded to the community's interest, participated in discussion, and as requested, and asked county council to approve the rezoning request. The project will deliver viable and needed residential homes, improving the character of the property in addition to providing a fresh look to the location. And again, that was Kim Pocock with MAP Land and Home LLC. And then for our next comment, it comes from Carolyn Kennedy. Says, Dear sir, the area around Lee Road in Rice Meadow Way is already congested and overpopulated. Numerous car accidents has happened in this one area, and my property has been damaged on several occasions. Buffer to buffer traffic makes it difficult to get to and from work in the morning and evening. Excessive noise and speeding from cars is nerve wracking daily. The roads are not able to handle the massive amount of people living here. Transportation wants to expand the roads and cut into my property to accommodate these wrongful situations. I am requesting that this case not be approved for these reasons. This area is overpopulated with people. Putting up townhomes and bringing in more people will only make the present situation worse. And that was the last comment. And then again, just a reminder that there was that petition that was submitted in with the comments as well. So that should be on page for that.
Thank you very much. You've heard the comments. The chair will now entertain the motion reference item five A one.
Mr. Chair, I believe Councilman Malinowski has his hand up, has got a question.
Thank you, Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Walker. I would just like to know what the PDD that is currently in existence is allowing.
Of commercial.
It was all commercial?
A section that's on before you with this PDD allows for commercial development.
Okay, and the petition. Mr. Delage, you said that it was in our agenda, but I don't see that. Does that so?
No, sir, it wasn't. We don't include petitions in the agendas, but it was, it should have been emailed to you.
Okay.
With the comments.
Okay, I just misunderstood what he said then, thank you.
Any other comments? Chair, now you entertain the motion reference item five A one.
Mr. Chair, if I may be heard, I have a motion.
You recognize.
At this time, I would move to approve the proposed amendment for case number twenty one dash zero zero two MA, which is listed as item A one on tonight's agenda.
Very good. You heard the motion for approval, there's a second. Moving properly second, any further discussion? There being nine, Ms. Mathis, can you call the role for the motion for approval for A one?
Certainly, Malinowski.
Yes.
Hugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tracyo.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
Over to Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings you to item five A two on your agenda, which is case number two one dash zero zero five MA. James Charles Hester, RU to NC. And that's twelve twenty Dutch Fork Road, tax map number R zero three three zero three dash zero one dash zero one. That public hearing is now open for that item. Mr. Price, will have any one time to speak to this item?
Yes, sir, I believe we just have one comment from the applicant.
Thank you, can you share that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, so the comment from the applicant. So we are requesting that twelve twenty Dutch Fork Road be rezoned to allow us to open a high end deli restaurant. Mr. Malinowski has been very helpful in getting us in contact with the Milford Park HOA that is directly behind us. And we have received their blessing. We have incorporated their initial request into our design and will continue to do so since they will be a very important factor in our success. We understand the trust that the community and this council will be giving us with this privilege, and we will devote all of our resources to live up to the high standards that go along with that optimism. Sincerely, Jim Hester.
Is it, that's all coming, that public hearing is now closed. The chair will entertain a motion reference item five A two.
Mr. Chair.
Recognize it, Malinowski.
Hey, Mr. Chair. I would like to thank Mr. Hester for working with the community on this matter and coming to some resolution. And based on the agreements, and everyone seems to be happy with it, I'll move for approval.
You heard the motion for approval, is there a second?
There's a second.
Moving properly second, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, I'll ask Ms. Mathis to call the role for the motion for approval for item five A two.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Hugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tracyo.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
Over to Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to item five A three on your agenda, case number twenty one dash zero zero six MA. Richard Jackson, PDD to RS dash E. Nina Lee, Natalie Road, tax map number R one four six zero zero dash zero two. I'm sorry, dash zero three dash two seven. That public hearing for that case is now open. Did anyone present any comments?
Oh, Mr. Chair, we did have a letter, and I believe that letter was sent to you and also Councilwoman Baron from the applicant, and they were requesting a deferral because it falls within fifteen days of the zoning public hearing. The applicant has to read the request before county council.
Thank you. And that's, that's all you received at this point, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I may be recognized.
Public hearing is now closed, now go ahead, Ms.
I, well, whereas we closed the public hearing, I had several constituents who had sent letters to, to the office, to our clerk's office, as well as to the zoning office. As you know, this item was deferred, or it was, we did not have the meeting last month. And this, and this item was deferred previously. And I was assured that those letters would be read into the record.
So, the public hearing was deferred to?
Yeah, we do have, we do have comments regarding this. I just wanted to point out that the applicant committed a request for deferral. So that'll be something that you would need to take up first, so you can take that up. And if you deny that request, then we can go ahead and read the other comments into the record.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, you recognize Ms.
My, my denial of that request, does that need to be made in a motion?
Yes.
Uh, I make a motion to, to deny the deferral.
The request for the, for the.
Request for, for deferral.
If, if there's a second to the motion for the request for the deferral, then I don't see before, we just question that first. It's a moving properly second. And again, that was a request to defer, could not accept the referral. I meant deferral. Ms. Mathis, you cover all.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Hugh.
Yes.
Living, McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tracyo.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
Over to Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And now what's before us is that item, and the last time, if the, if the item was deferred and the public hearing deferred, and those folks did not get up to them to speak, yes, it is proper for them to have their presentation read now if they wish to. So, so Ms. Baron, I'm gonna turn, you have the floor, you want to speak to, continue to speak to your concern about the constituents having an opportunity to make sure they be heard now.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I do think that the citizens, especially those in District Seven in the Lake Elizabeth area, deserve a, the right to be heard once again. As many of, many of you that were seated last year may, may, may not remember, but I want to bring to your attention that this very same project was brought before the council in October or November. Now, per rules, this should, they should have to wait a year. I'm not, I'm still not very clear on how it's before us again. But obviously, it was vetted, and it's, and it's, and it's been okay with Mr. Price and his team. So at this point, I would like for all of the letters, or the letters that, within the timeline, to be read from those citizens, from the Lake Elizabeth Fair Lawn community, to be heard.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Do you have the previous letters that was provided when this item was deferred?
Yes, sir, we do.
Mr. Chair, can I have clarification, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Baron is saying that this is possibly improperly before us since if it, I, I don't know. I didn't get it. Was this denied when it was before the council last time, Ms. Baron?
Yes.
Is it the exact same zoning being requested?
If I'm not mistaken, it is.
Well, if that's the case, Mr. Price, then why would this be before us? Because she's correct in that a denial, you have to wait a year.
Um, you're correct in, from that standpoint, Councilman Malinowski and also Councilwoman Baron. What happened before, what came before you, it was regarding what they were requesting from. Previously, we thought that the property was on rural. So it was going from rural to RSE, which is single family residential estate. But it turns out that that property was not rural, it was actually PDD. So because of that, they were allowed to come back and make a request. Even though the request is the same, it is what they were coming from. So instead of going from rural to RSE, they're actually going from PDD to RSE.
So it is not the zoning request that can't be the same, it has to be the entire matter?
Well, I think it was just a matter of what was presented before the planning commission and also county council. We wanted to make sure that you had the correct information. And previously was deemed that the correct information as to what the existed, the current zoning of the property was, was not correct. So we had to make that correction, and we allowed them to come back.
That may be, but as Ms. Baron pointed out, the request for that particular rezoning was denied, regardless of what it was coming from. So why would that still not come under the one year rule?
Again, you know, what we looked at was what was all of the information that was prepared and presented correct, and was deemed that it was not correct based on what the zoning was during that time.
Did you check with Legal on that and get an opinion?
Uh, no, sir.
I'd like an opinion from Legal on that, please.
Ms.
Mr. Malinowski. I, I haven't been, you know, in, involved in discussions about this, but just from, from listening, I I would have to say that I agree with Mr. Price that as the you're going from something to something, and only part of that was the same, the applications were a little different. Maybe the reasoning behind staff's recommendation would be different, maybe the planning commission's reasoning would be different. So in that sense, I'm not sure you're, it's the exact same information. So I would have, I would have recommended to him that he could go forward. That still is up to you.
Okay, I'll, I'll be quiet and let Ms. Baron talk, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I be recognized.
Yes, please go ahead.
Uh, I would also, since we're talking to this point, I forward to each one of the council members a memo that was sent out to the applicant from Mr. Price's office. There is, there is more backstory that I think that this body should be well informed about before we make a vote on such a critical piece of our community. So, Mr. Price, if you would, please explain the, the letter that went out to the applicant that you sent out yesterday.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, and I'll kind of go back a little further than that. I think it'll provide some clarity. Okay, so under, um, under the, when we first adopted the current land development code, so we're going back to two thousand and five, there was a provision in the code stating if the PDD was not initiated within two years, the general development plan would expire. And essentially, what that left them, would leave you with was a parcel with a zoning designation with no, with no allowable development standards. Essentially, there's nothing you could do with it, you just had a zoning. So it was determined that when, that the previous staff, that you can't have a piece of property that has no development standard. So it was forwarded back to rural, it was deemed by staff to go back to rural, which was the original zoning. Of course, once this case came back before us and we had to do some more reviews and investigations essentially of what happened before, it was determined that one of the provisions within that code was that county council could make the amendment to the zoning. And so it was not proper, thus, instead of the property being deemed rural, it was decided the property still maintained a PDD zoning designation without any development or use standards. So that's, that's what we had before. Again, I've been working with the applicant, and there's been a little discussion with Legal, but mostly with the applicant. And we, what was pointed out to us was that fourteen days prior to the PDD actually expiring, which would have been, I believe, December the sixteenth, two thousand and eight, that county council amended that previous section I was referring to that, that that caused the general development plan to expire, if not development did not take place within two years. The county council deleted that section, thus, that, it was deemed that now the property still maintained the PDD designation and the general development plan was still in place by fourteen days.
Mr. Chair, if I just may, and I'm not gonna belabor this point, but I think that it, it does state the obvious, that there's a lot going on with this development and this project, whereas Mr. Price just gave us a whole litany of history. But if we look in our packet on page, on our, in our packet where it refers to this document, I think it's on page seventeen, where the history of the zoning history of this property, none of that information is included. Now, if we just learned this information, it would have been helpful for the entire body to have had this ahead of time so that we could make an informed decision on behalf of the citizens that we serve. So I, I just want to bring that point. If it's gonna be, you know, we've got all these, we got a lot of history about this particular parcel of land, but it was not given to council. I, I digress, sir, but I, I would like the letters to be heard.
Again, this item is, is based on what I've heard, is probably before us. And the first thing referenced this item is, is an open public hearing. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm now going to open the public hearing for item five A three and ask staff to provide input that was received, reference item five A three.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, so we have our first letter in opposition. It's Lisa Mitchum. I am the homeowner residing at three 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 Nina Lee Drive and received notice of the proposed zoning map amendment being presented before the Richland County Planning Commission. Let me start by stating that I am against the amendment to change the zoning of the area proposed. This area is a rural zoned area and is what played a major reason on why I chose to buy my property and build my home here. As my family and I work in town where it is heavily populated, it has been a source of relief to come home to a neighborhood that is peaceful and not so heavily populated. I settled on this location so that my children would be able to ride their bicycles and my family could take family walks for exercise. The changes zoning would bring a great deal of traffic into this neighborhood. We've experienced very negative effects of increased traffic that was a reroute, rerouted from Wilson Boulevard after the flood, October of two thousand and fifteen. During this time, we suffered cars crashing into our brick columns at the entrance to our home on two occasions and attempted burglary of our vehicle from our property. With the entrance and exit way to this proposed site development on Nina Lee Drive will yet again bring significant amount of traffic into this neighborhood, denying my family the quiet enjoyment of our neighborhood. As a taxpaying citizen in Richland County, I made the decision to buy property in this area, well aware of the zoning. The investment group that purchased this property knew what the zoning was when they chose to purchase and should not now be launching a plan that would upset the life and enjoyment of the residents that live in this neighborhood. Please put the citizens of this neighborhoods before project. And then the next request is from Melvin and Gerald Lillian Mickey. And again, I apologize if I butcher anyone's name. We live at four oh one Nina Lee Drive at Columbia, South Carolina, two nine two oh three. We are writing this letter requesting the Richland County Council's denial of the rezoning proposal being presented on March twenty third by Saint Capital, case number twenty six dash zero zero six MA from PDD to RSE. Since last October of two thousand and twenty one, when the zoning proposal was denied by Richland County Council, we have had a meeting February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one, with the developers' attorneys during the Zoom video meeting on February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one, set up by Ms. Gretchen Baron, our Richland County Council representative. We were able to ask. We were able to ask questions as well as converse with them about our community concerns. Subsequent to that meeting, we have received correspondence and capitals, uh, with regard to our questions, concerns raised about the items we would like to see addressed or listed in any agreement that may be forthcoming. Uh, their response was not well received and is clear that skirting on the issues at hand for our, our community is how their responses were viewed as we discussed their answers to our questions for the developer. We have reviewed public documents and are now aware of the sale price, cost and projected income from the development based on the number of houses they specified. We are taxpayers, we work to keep our properties looking respectable. We have a homeowners association that works on our behalf and we are law-abiding citizens. We ask you to deny the recommendation, uh, from Saint Capital until such time as we can once again dialogue with them. So they are clear that our community expects answers which will satisfy or at least make some compromises that in turn will benefit everyone involved. All right, and the next letter is from Natalie Washington. Um, it says, Dear Richland County Council, my name is Natalie Washington, PhD, and I've lived on, uh, Lake Elizabeth Drive for over sixteen years. We again request that you deny the rezoning request to RSE, uh, residential, single-family estate for the property at Nina Lee Drive at nine two, nine two one six and nine two six zero Wilson Boulevard. Uh, restoring RU zoning would be great. Here are the reasons or our basic reasons for this request. Environmental flooding impact from massive runoff because of Lake Elizabeth is situated in a low-lying area uh, below proposed zone change. Wilson Boulevard, Highway twenty-one is not constructed to handle the increased traffic from such a development. Uh, community streets, which are main entrances to the property are improper because they are constructed to be low-volume roads. Loss of quality of life with an increase in traffic comes an increase in the commute time, accidents, litter, noise, pollution, potholes, erosion and cost as well as, or as well increased danger to children and adult walkers, runners, bike riders and fishers. All of this can also decrease property value. Uh, the developers are deceptive, they lack guarantees, misrepresented zoning and construction information and seek to disregard the integrity of our area by crowding houses onto the property. They know that the law would support their intentions if Richland County Council allowed a rezoning to RSE. A scrupulous developer would still build houses on that property with the RU status that the building has had, had for decades. The current interest developers want to rezone to RSE so they can legally build too many houses for the actual environment. Uh, their, um, February presentation, uh, should be a concern to everyone. The most egregious misrepresentations were the amount of houses intended for the lot size and the property the zoning to provide further insight into why our reasons for requesting denial of the RSE zoning are valid. Let me take a moment to explain. Uh, A, the developers presented misinformation at best. That's, it is clear that they are prone to ignore Richland County and neighboring community concerns. Misinformation included, the proposal, uh, presents a mathematical impossibility concerning houses and acres, namely that the hundred and sixty acres would be developed for six hundred to eight hundred homes plus amenities and they'd only build two point one homes, uh, per acre. Um, and then however, there can only be three hundred and twenty homes if a hundred and sixty acres, that two acres per home and no amenities. Uh, when we asked this question in the Q and A, their answer was that the property is three hundred acres, pointing out the property is three hundred acres, that answered the mathematic impossibility of two homes per acre on one hundred and sixty acres, uh, because the whole three hundred acres is not sustainable because of wetlands. Plus, they emphasized a hundred and sixty-eight acres of land would be good for open space uh, or used for open space. In this scenario, there isn't even space for the proposed extensive amenities. So based on pure math, they seek to build too many homes and they provide gross information.
Um, uh, Mr. Delight, I'll leave you, um, you see in two minutes, um, let's allow for each comment.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Um, our, our last comment is from Cheryl Brown. Um, it says, Dear Richland County Council members, I am Cheryl Brown and my husband Lloyd Brown. We are residents of Lake Elizabeth Estates subdivision and reside at two hundred Bolson Road for twenty-three years. Uh, we are writing to Richland County Council members to ask for your support as our community is faced with heavy hearts rezoning in our quiet rural subdivision where we have lived for a length of time and feel safe. The rezoning would take place close to our house and closer to our neighbors' houses that could severely affect the residents of Lake Elizabeth Estates and residents of surrounding communities. The rezoning hearing for three hundred and eight acre tract borders, Lake Elizabeth Estates is scheduled to come before Richland County Council members on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at seven PM, case number twenty-one dash zero, zero, six MA, uh, for approval to rezone from PDD to RSE. Surprisingly, rezoning code was changed from RU to RSE since the first Richland County Council members' hearing on the rezoning matter on October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty at seven PM and is questionable as it should be zoned RU rule. Uh, we are asking for your support in the rezoning matters to deny its efforts. The develop proposed, uh, development proposed entrance intersections of Bolson Road and Nina Lee Drive and will dramatically increase the daily volume of traffic into and out of Lake Elizabeth Estates. Upon reading February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one proposed letter submitted by Saint Capital, point number one mentioned no access of construction point connecting Nina Lee Drive, Presley Drive and Fairlong Court. I would like to emphasize that Lake Elizabeth Estates, Homeowners Association Incorporated and Fairlong Court are distinct separate entities. Therefore, Bolson Road was not included in the no access construction point that lends me to think that Saint Capital will use Bolson Road as a construction access point. Keeping in mind that we, among other residents who live on Bolson Road, would have to contend with the influx of traffic to include massive construction vehicles slash trucks. And if Bolson Road became an access point with six hundred to eight hundred homes built, will increase that on many cars on Bolson Road is not designed for high-volume traffic. Uh, therefore, all access points in the Lake Elizabeth Estates subdivision, we are asking for your support to have closed permanently for all time. For example, when Bolson Road was paved, we experienced the shaking, drawing of the house to the point of china cabinets were trembling and during Columbia, South Carolina, October one to fifth, twenty fifteen historic flood, Lake Elizabeth Estates become a thoroughway when our dam breached diverting traffic through our neighborhood for approximately four years. During this time, we experienced heavy traffic, trash, garbage dumping and much dumping of large items onto our roads to include hitting and knocking down our mailboxes as we experienced at two hundred Bolson Road. Our mailbox was knocked down and nearby ditch and theft. Uh, these incidents.
That's the two minutes, excuse me, Mr. Delight.
All right, and, and that's all that we have for, uh, the comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that public hearing is now closed. Chairman entertain a motion regarding, regarding item five, eight, three.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Baron, you recognize?
I'd like to make a motion that we deny this request.
Very good.
Yeah, the motion for denials and proper second, uh, discussion.
Mr. Chair, if I may, and, and I'm, and I'll be real brief. Um, I, I think that my colleagues here and my passion behind making sure that the citizens are heard and they get exactly what they need. Uh, while at the same time, I will, um, give acknowledgement to the, um, the developers, they really, you know, they, they've tried, um, to come to some senses, but they, they, it, it, it's, it's, this, this just started wrong. This just started wrong, it, it probably shouldn't have never started. Um, and so that, that's all I'm, that's all I have to say.
Any further discussion? There being none, I'll ask Ms. Masters to call the roll for the motion for denial for item five, eight, three.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teracio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do you have bring us, um?
Chair. Point of information.
Would recognize?
Yes, this is Shaquise Newton, may I be recognized?
I, I can barely hear you, but it's.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, a little better now, yes.
Uh, yes, just point of information, that item, the applicant requested withdrawal and we took a motion to vote no on that. My question is, was that vote necessary? Because if council had taken no action regarding their request and had just moved, um, anyway, would that have been properly before us? And I ask because, um, that same situation is going to come before me in a little bit. So I understand that it was proper to vote, but my question is, was it required? They requested council action and did council have to take an official vote to deny the request for withdrawal?
They didn't withdraw. It was for deferment.
I'm sorry, the, the request, the request for.
Request for deferment, yeah.
I, I misspoke, but they requested an action of council. And my, my question was simply, are we in those circumstances required to vote to deny their request? Or are we at liberty to just simply take a, a different action?
Um, I don't know, we, and, and, and I don't know, I don't know, I'm not sure whether we, whether we could just take no action. Uh, but just simply because it was requested, I just thought it would be easy for the question to to, to deliberate and just take, take care of it in that, in that way. But what was required or not, I, I don't have an answer to that question.
That's fine, I, I just wanted to inquire, thank you.
That move is to case number, um, five, eight, four, which is, um, case number twenty-one dash zero, zero, seven MA, Jessica Haygood, that's from NC to RU, um, from NC RU to LI. Um, that's at ten forty-one McCord's Fair, Fair Road. Uh, text map number R three, eight, zero, 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 dash zero, three, dash zero, one and zero, two. That public hearing is now open, did anyone sign up, speak?
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, um, as this case was, um, deferred from, excuse me, was, was originally scheduled to be heard last month, but unfortunately due to, um, it had to be brought, it was deferred, it had to be, it was brought back before you today. We do have a number of comments for this particular request. Um, but he's, those comments were also read previously, but we do still have those same comments.
But those, those comments have already been read into the record?
Well, I believe we've read those at the last, um, zoning public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Unless there's any objections, I don't, um, request that they be read again, since it's already read into the record. And if there's, and if there's no objection, that there, are, are there any that were, that was not read into the record the last time?
Uh, no, sir, all of the comments that we have, um, that we compiled were from the previous, um, case.
And, 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 and read into the record. Um, what, what that said, then I'll close that public hearing and, 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 and open that up for a motion, um, I mean, Ms. English, you recognize?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, at this.
We did read that before, right? I think the public hearing was open for that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Price, you're through? You may go ahead, Ms. English. Ms. English, you recognize?
My apologies, I'm still on mute. I move for case number, um, two, one, dash, zero, zero, seven MA. Um, Ms. Jessica Haygood from NC to RU to LI, um, be denied.
Um, okay, the motion is ready now, um, in a, um,
Second.
Proper second. And that was, that is in support, that is in support of the planning commission and the staff for disapproval?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I'd like to go on the record, if I may.
Go ahead.
I spoke with Ms. Ms. Haygood at length and we've, um, she's also worked with the staff and with complete understanding how this case is unique, um, that we are truly waiting on a code rewrite and they may visit this next year. So I've spoken with, um, some of the, um, people that, um, initially brought those requests forward, um, the comments forward. And, um, Ms. Jessica Haygood and I had, um, several conversations and she is fine with this. And I just wanted to go on the record to, um, to share that with the staff.
Thank you. You, you, you heard the motion, it was proper second, any further discussion? If, if not, Ms. Masters, can you call the roll for the vote for the motion for item five, eight, four?
Certainly, Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teracio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item, um, five, eight, five, which is case number two, zero dash zero, three, eight MA, Roberto Garcia, uh, that's RU to LI. It's located at nineteen seventeen Screaming Eagle Road, text map number R three, three, nine, zero, zero, dash, zero, one, dash, zero, two. That public hearing is now open. Um, did anyone provide information references to public hearing?
Um, yes, sir, we do have comments, um, from both the applicant and, um, and also, um, other citizens speaking yes to request.
Can you share those comments for the rec, please?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, so the comment from the applicant, uh, so out of town wasn't able to submit a comment, but we just want to rezone it to have the trucks park there, nothing else in a future. I'm planning to build my house there and have animals also, thank you. So that was the, uh, comment submitted by the applicant. And then in opposition to the case, we have from, uh, Ms. Susan B. Lord. Um, so received your letter today reminding me of the forthcoming meeting on Tuesday. Greatly appreciate, I remain greatly opposed to this rezoning as this property is owned residential and agriculture. And in July twenty twenty-one, I will have lived here for twenty-six years. This is my third letter to your office and I hope you will have the opportunity to reread my previous letters before the Zoom meeting this Tuesday evening. These people have done nothing to improve the property, i.e. fixed broken-down hot wire all over the pastures, fixed the down fences, mow, pick up their trash all over and even their individual construction dump areas. The indoor riding arena still houses construction equipment, four-wheelers, dirt bikes and even stored household items. I can only imagine what this property would look like if they're allowed to rezone it and bring back all their construction equipment slash surprise, supplies. This eighteen-star barn was built for horses in the nineteen seventies, not storage, even though they only have one horse. To date, the planning commission has already disapproved this request five oh and the staff recommendation also disapproved it as can be viewed on page thirty-three. Please, my privacy and my fifty-acre property value would greatly decrease in value uh, and I would be forced looking out my barn entrance from my two horses and my front door daily at their mess. Thank you for your attention to this matter. And then we have another comment from a Kathy Hardman and writing this letter out of concern of potential impact to the community if the proposed zoning change is approved. It is my understanding that the proposed change from rural to white industrial will facilitate parking slash storage of dump trucks at nineteen seventeen Screaming Eagle Road. Of concern is an increase to large vehicle traffic on Screaming Eagle Road. Traffic is already challenging with the garbage trucks access, accessing the landfill as well as dump trucks moving sand. We also have to contend with logging trucks on occasion using Screaming Eagle Road. Before COVID nineteen, we had regular community meetings at the Sheriff Department Region Seven substation. One of the issues raised repeatedly was the increased traffic, specifically trucks. During peak afternoon slash evening hours, traffic often backs up from the intersection of personal and Screaming Eagle to as far as a, I think that's a quarter mile from the substation. I respectfully request before approving zoning change, conduct a comprehensive study of the current traffic issues, safe concerns and regulations. Thank you in advance. And those are all the comments we have for that case, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that public hearing is now closed. In the discussion for item five, eight, eight. Ms. Matthew, you recognize?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, disapprove or deny the request.
Very good. The, um, the motion is the second.
Very good.
It's a moving proper second. Any further discussion? If not, um, Ms. Masters, could you call the roll for the motion, um, for now for item five, eight, five?
Certainly, Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings the item five A six on your agenda. That is case number twenty-one, dash zero one zero M A. Kelvin Steelman, um, P D D to P D D. That's at eight thirty, I'm sorry, eight and nine thirty Rabbit Run. Tax map number R two one eight zero zero dash zero one dash zero six. That public hearing is now open. Did anyone provide any?
Mr. Chair, we have to recognize.
Ms. Newton, you want to be recognized before I get that answer?
Yes, I do. I do want to be recognized.
I can barely hear you again.
I'm not sure why, Mr. Chair. I'll try to.
I can hear you now.
I will, uh, yell much to the dismay of my family for a minute here. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me. Um, this is an unusual rezoning request compared to our agenda because it's actually already approved for zoning, and they want to downzone. But there have been a lot of questions in the community about this, and so I move to defer, uh, both the public hearing and the vote on this item until our July meeting. But actually, it looks like Mr. Malinowski's raised his hand, so I don't want to um, necessarily prevent him from speaking.
Um, Ms., that, that was a motion for deferral, um, well, it wasn't second yet, um. Mr. Malinowski, were you to speak to this?
Hey, Mr. Chair, I just want a clarification, so we don't run into another item like the last one. The, uh, number six, it shows that it's Kelvin Steelman, and I know it's Kevin Steelman, so I don't want somebody coming back and saying their name was spelled wrong, we need to do it over. That's all. Thank you, Ms. Newton.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Race, you have a question for clarification?
Yes, sorry. Um, so I have a question, just, uh, is there a, uh, like a name for this development or anything that can help us identify this one? I mean, is this a, is this a neighborhood or, um, does it have a subdivision name or something?
Um, we kind of re.
Senator, give us price.
Is that Mr. Price? Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Muted unnecessarily. Um, I, um, when P D D issue would come in, we never specifically asked them to give a particular name to it. It was just a request. Um, so by staff, a lot of times, we would just refer to it either by the street it was on or by the applicant. And so this particular one, we always refer to as the Bunch P D D.
The Bunch? Did I hear that correctly?
It was Bunch, okay. Because it was developed by the Bunch Brothers, um, so it was known as the Bunch P D D.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Ms., you need a for.
I move to defer.
The motion is for the first, that's second.
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 Second, the movement properly second for item five A six, uh, Ms. Mast can call the roll for the motion for the throw.
Certainly. Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings the item five A seven on your agenda. That is case number twenty-one dash zero one one M A. That's Michael S. Hawk and Susan Hawk, uh, that's R S, um, H D to, um, R U. That's at one oh nine Crane Branch Lane, tax map number R two zero two zero zero, dash zero three, dash three nine. Uh, the public hearing for that item is now open. Uh, Mr. Price, do we have anyone, uh, who signed up to present something for this item?
Um, yes, Councilman, um.
Let me recognize Mr. Walker first, um.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, at this time, I would move to defer this matter. Uh, this, uh, this request is somewhat, uh, unusual. The property is currently zoned as residential, single-family, high-density, but the applicant is the owner of the property, and he's seeking to have it, uh, rezoned for rural. And I know there, there are conversations going on between the county, the property owned, as well as the Conservation Commission. So if we could defer this, um, to the next zoning hearing, uh, that would be appreciated.
Second.
Second.
It's moving properly second for the throw, uh, not the Babels, Ms. Masters, can you call the roll for the motion for the throw for item seven A?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings the item five A seven on our agenda. That is case number twenty-one dash zero one two M A. Wyman Shaw, that's R U to R S M V, um, eleven eleven A J Amick Road, tax map number R zero two four one four dash zero two, dash three two portion of, um, that public hearing is now open. Uh, Mr. Price, do we have, um, anyone who has been attempting for presentation?
Yes, I believe we have a comment from the applicant only.
Can you share that for the record?
Yes.
All right, so, um, this is from Wyman Shaw. Uh, my neighbor has asked to buy a small triangle of our property to consider renovating his house. Due to the uniqueness of his existing parcel, my rural zoning will limit his planning of a renovation due to a setback requirement in the rural zoning code. Originally, his parcel was and still may be a part of Valentine Code, thus his parcel's current zoning. Uh, his current zoning would allow broader, broader planning ideas if he does buy our parcel. Feel free to contact me at the number below for any clarification. Thank you for your consideration. And that's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that public hearing is now, um, open, um, I'm sorry, closed. Uh, Mr. Malinowski?
Hey, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank Mr. Shaw for meeting with me and his neighbor, discussing this ahead of time. Based on all that, I would, uh, agree with the planning commission and staff recommendations and move to approve.
Second.
Most for approval is properly second. Any further discussion? There'll be a nine, um, Ms. Masters, can you call the roll for item five A eight?
Certainly. Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. That brings the item five A nine on your agenda. That is case number twenty-one dash zero one three M A. That's Ryan Malfred, um, from P D D to G C, and that is four to five, six to one Hobbs Scrabble Road. Tax map number R two zero three zero zero dash zero four dash one five. That public hearing is now open, um. Ms. Price, did we receive any?
No, sir. We don't have any, um, comments regarding this request.
Thank you. That public hearing is now closed. Um, the chair will entertain a motion reference, um, case number twenty-one dash zero one three. Mr. Um, Walker, you recognize?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. At this time, I would move to approve the proposed amendment, um, as recommended by the planning commission, as well as our staff relative to case number twenty-one dash oh one three M A.
You heard the motion, that's second.
Second.
It's a movement properly second. Now, last, no further discussion. Now, last, Ms. Masters, call the roll for item five A nine.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I bring the item eight, uh, five A ten on our agenda. That is case number twenty-one dash zero one four M A. David Goodson, R U to G C, that's six thirteen Sterling Goodson Road. Tax map number R two two zero one three dash zero one dash zero four. Um, Mr. Price, did, did anyone present anything for council's position? That public hearing is now open, did anyone present anything?
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, we did receive a letter asking for withdrawal of this request by the applicant. But again, because it falls within fifteen days of the zoning public hearing meeting, um, it has to, the applicant has to meet the request before county council.
Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me better now?
Little bit.
Uh, okay, I'll yell a little louder.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to deny the request to withdraw the application.
You heard the motion to deny the, uh, request of the application. It's a properly second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, may I be recognized again?
You recognize.
Uh, and I'll try to be a little bit louder. Um, I appreciate that this application has been, um, that it's been requested to be withdrawn. Were that to happen, the applicant could come back, um, within a year to make this same request again. I'm in complete agreement with the planning commission and staff that this recommendation is not appropriate for the area, and it won't be appropriate six months from now or, or eight months from now. So I think it's better to go ahead and, and take definitive action, which is why I requested to deny the request for withdrawal.
Thank you. Um, Mrs., um, there'll be another, um, discussion, um, Ms. Masters, can you call the roll for the motion for denial for the withdrawal?
Certainly. Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Um, that brings us to, um, um, text amendment action, um, anything?
Mr. Chair, whi- which one are we doing now?
Other text, text amendment action after number ten, item eleven.
I thought Ms. Newton wasn't finished with number ten. All you did was.
That's right, that was drawn, and that, we didn't, we needed, we needed a motion for disapproval, I'm sorry.
Right.
I, I, I didn't know if there were any comments, so we didn't have a public hearing, so that's what I was waiting for, Mr. Chair.
Well, since it, since it was drawn, and then, um.
I got you. I move.
Well, let me, let, let me back up. That put it before, because it's on the agenda. Is, did anyone present anything, uh, comments? Mr. Price? The answer was no?
Also, there were no additional comments submitted, other than the request for withdrawal.
Thank you. Um, and, 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 and some, Newton, yes, a motion now is.
Mr. Chair?
But you recognize?
Move to deny.
Most for the now, uh, this is second.
Second.
It's moving proper second, uh, for denial for item, uh, five A ten. Ms. Masters, can you call the roll for the motion for denial for item, um, five A ten?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, that brings us to, um, text amendment action, uh, amend the two thousand fifteen recent county comprehensive plan, putting the pieces in place by incorporating and adopting the rediscover, um, Sand Hills neighborhood master plan into the plan. Um, Mr., um, Price, you want to speak to that amendment?
Um, at this point, uh, Brian Crooks, um, a comprehensive interim comprehensive planner, uh, excuse me, planning services manager, will speak on this, on this, um, text amendment.
Good evening, council. So I just wanted to kind of give a, a, kind of an overview of this request. Um, so what we are asking is to amend the comp plan to, again, incorporate this new, uh, neighborhood master plan that we've had in the works for a little bit over a year and a half. And so the, the rediscover Sand Hills plan is a new neighborhood master plan, uh, that really focuses on the areas around the intersection that's really known as Pontiac, the Northeast Industrial Park, as well as the Royal Pines Estates subdivision. So the plan area encompasses around one point two five square miles, or about eight hundred or so acres. And so the, the plan identifies this, uh, of Northeast Richland as Sand Hills. And so what this plan looks to do is establish a vision for the area that sets forth a rediscovered Northeast Richland County community portraying safe and walkable streets, thriving businesses, quality services, and increased recreational opportunities. The Sand Hills area shall be established with a sense of place that encourages community interaction and enhances the overall living and working environment. So in addition to this vision, the plan also sets forth seven goals related to transportation, recreation, and conservation, beautification, businesses, housing, land use and zoning, and services and safety, all catered towards achieving that vision. Um, so as part of this, the plan looks at a variety of recommended interventions to begin exploring in order to realize that vision and meet these goals. And so these interventions and recommendations range across a variety of topics related to those goals, from everything looking at advocating, uh, for traffic enhancements through S E D O T to exploring recreational opportunities in the area, as well as creating thematic branding for the various commercial corridors, as well as encouraging, encouraging parcels for business development, to promoting things like affordable housing within the community, as well as establishing protected areas for school bus stops within the Royal Pine subdivision specifically. And so, uh, this would fall under the auspices of the Neighborhood Improvement Program. Um, so what majority of that neighborhood redevelopment fund goes to. Uh, and so that's what we're really asking council to vote upon this evening. Um, and as council has any questions, I'm here to address those as well.
You heard the comments regarding the, um, text amendment reference, um, rediscover Sand Hills. The chair will entertain a motion regarding the, uh, theft, um, recommendation. The amendment to the fifteen plan.
Ms. Chair, I make a motion to approve.
Ms. Mackey, motion for approval, um, properly second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Mackey, recognize?
Yes, I, I would just like to, uh, point out that this, um, master plan, um, actually started and was established back under Councilman Chip Jackson, and he put a lot of work into this. And most of the majority of it was all done by the time I, I came on to council. And so, uh, just wanted to note his involvement and reach out to the community to help get input and get this done.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Baron, again, Ms. Malinowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do, I just have one quick question. So relative to the, to the master plan, um, and it, it, it's noted that it's, uh, two thousand fifteen, how often do we update the entire plan?
Yes, ma'am. So the comprehensive plan that we have now was, uh, was adopted in two thousand fifteen. And so per, uh, state law, we have to have an update every ten years. And so within that interim, you have the ability to make any updates or changes, as you will. Um, but as part of that state law, you take a look at or perform an evaluation at the five-year mark. So to really kind of identify where some things may need to be updated, where some things may need to be changed. Um, and so that is something that we have, uh, been looking at over the past couple of years as we hit that five-year mark, uh, last year. And so we won't be looking to do a full new plan, um, or, you know, kind of super updates, if you will, until two thousand twenty-five.
So are there any, will, will you have any additional updates in this, in this period, I guess, of the five-year period right now? Or is this the only recommendation?
We've been looking at certain things um that we've been trying to look at. So in particular, things like the future land use map, um how we can add greater prescription to it versus just kind of having the broad categories and where some of those things may need to be changed. Um, so really looking at a variety of analysis related to it. And so that's going to be one of those big things that we would be looking at um as kind of that interim updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Malinowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Crooks, have all the necessary public uh hearings and input been done on this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Ms. Newton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up on Ms. Baron's question and uh Mister, and the answer that we got to that question. As we look at the comprehensive plan, one of the things that we've talked about that I just would like to state again is that as we have had these zoning public hearings, from time to time, there are areas where there are consistently differences of opinion between what the comprehensive plan says and what the council member and or the planning commission feels is consistent with the character of the communities where these rezoning requests are being made. So I would ask that as we look at updating the comprehensive plan, we pay particular, particular attention to those areas where we know that there's been a mismatch. I know that there have been some in my area, and I would love to see those specifically examined and addressed. And I think that that might apply to some other areas as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Did we take action on the text amendment?
No.
I don't.
Um.
We had a motion.
Yeah, we had a motion.
You have a motion and a second.
Yeah, we had a motion in a second, for sure. Just want to make sure. Um, uh, Mrs. Um, Math can call the role for um the text amendment item five eight eleven?
Certainly. Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teracio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Be- before I go to other business, I'm going to um just thank my colleagues um for um the time they put in engaging um of the applicant as well as their constituents reference the uh zoning issues. You know, I think that's something that have not have happened as often in the past to this extent. So I just think it's important that um we continue to engage um the applicants and constituents as we move forward with the zoning issues. Just want, just want to say that. Thank you. Other business? Any other business, Mr. Price? Staff?
No, sir. There's no other business.
No other business. Next time on our dinner is item seven, adjournment. It's a move and properly second. Any discussion um in anything for most of them, if not, um, Mrs. Math can call the role for the most of them.
Certainly. Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teracio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Over to Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'll give everyone a quick five minutes to log on. As you may recall, we have a quick special call meeting, um immediately following our zoning public hearing. So I'll give you five minutes to log on so we can get started with that quick special call meeting.
Mr. Chair, the operative word is quick.
Yeah, you notice how many times I said that, you know, to make a point here.
I I I want to give it.